I'd like to call the meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Huntsville to order. This is the July 28th meeting of the Planning Commission and I'd like to welcome each of you who are here tonight. Some of you are here to talk about your neighborhoods or the City of Huntsville in general. It may not be right in your neighborhood, but everything that happens here concerns you because it is your city. We have a lot of people from the City of Huntsville Planning Department and from the Engineering Office and people to help us sort through the agenda tonight. I'd first like to start by introducing the members of the Planning Commission. I'm Janet Watson, I'm Chairman, and start down on the end.
Vince Dickens with US Army Contracts.
Donna Hendricks.
Jenny Robinson, City Council.
I'm Les Tillery.
Gary Whitley, Huntsville Utilities.
Steve Strickland.
Jeffrey Rice, Lieutenant, Huntsville Police Department.
Michelle Jordan, Planning Department.
And we have Claudia Anderson, you can't see probably, but she's back in the back. She's with the Legal Department and she helps to make sure we stay on the right page as we go through this, so to speak. Our first item of business is adoption of the minutes.
Second.
Are there any corrections or additions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Our next item of business is public hearings and as we call each of the public, each of the items on the agenda, you may go to one of the microphones on either side of the room and give us your name and address for the record and speak to us about any of your concerns about it, pro or con, about the item on the agenda. And I would ask that you keep your comments. If there's more than one person here from a certain neighborhood, just keep your comments, something new when it comes up. You know, if you don't like the street extended and your neighbors already said that, then we listen very carefully to what each of you tells us and try to address your concerns as much as we can. That being said, our first item of business is Harrisburg Estates Phase Two, a re-subdivision of Track One of Harrisburg Estates. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Harrisburg Estates? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item two is Little Mountain Subdivision Phase One, a re-subdivision of lots 20, 21, 22, 33, and 58. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Little Mountain Subdivision? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item three is Meadows at Hampton Cove, Phase Two. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Meadows at Hampton Cove? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item four is Oak Grove at Farley Farm, Phase Three. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Oak Grove at Farley Farm? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item five is Summer Point. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Summer Point? Hearing no comment.
Jenny, she's here. If you'll come to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I'm not here to complain or to speak about it. I just would like to see plans because it impacts, it's up on our, on the back of our property and I want to make sure that we're not impacted overly by trees cutting down and things like that.
Yeah. Could you give us your name and?
Michelle Knutson, K-N-U-T-S-O-N, Michelle with one L, 120 Autumn Crest Drive, Madison, Alabama.
Okay, thank you. Is the engineer here for Summer Point? Mr. Smith, would you mind meeting with Mrs. Knutson and showing her the plans?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was Mr. Mullins. Would you go out in the lobby? I'll leave that public hearing open for a little while, but I can't, we don't have a very long agenda, so I can't leave it open for a long time. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll leave the public hearing on Summer Point open until Mrs. Knutson has a chance to look at the plans. Item six is location, character, and extent, Providence School, bus loop modifications. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Providence School? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item seven is a petition to revise a final plat note on Sotheby, Phase Two, at McMullen Cove. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Sotheby, Phase Two, at McMullen Cove? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item eight is zoning. Ashley, would you give us the zoning information? Item A is Green Mountain Two, rezoning.
This property is located on the east, excuse me, west side of South Shawty Road and on the north side of South Billits Square Road. This property is approximately .25 acre. This property is a city-imposed rezoning. This is a part two of our initial Green Mountain rezoning. City staff would like to clean up some leftover zoning designations that don't necessarily fit the character of the neighborhood nor the existing uses. This particular property owner wanted to opt out of the initial Green Mountain rezoning, but they did agree to rezone their neighborhood business C-1A Sliver to Residence Two-A, which is consistent with the remaining of their property.
Is there anyone here to comment on the Green Mountain Two rezoning? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item B is Magna Carter rezoning. Ashley.
This property is located on the west side of US Highway 231 South and on the north side of Magna Carter Drive. It's approximately 5.46 acres. The property is currently zoned light industry and the current property owner would like to rezone this property to Residence Two District. This will accommodate a future single-family detached subdivision that the property owner would like to create and the Residence Two zoning designation will allow them to create this particular subdivision type.
Is there anyone here to comment on the Magna Carter rezoning? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Ashley. Oh, I'm sorry. Item D is, I'm sorry, item C is Research Station rezoning.
This property is located on the east side of Research Park Boulevard and south of Research Station Boulevard. This property is immediately south of the Research Station subdivision. The property is currently zoned Residence Two-B District, which is consistent with the adjacent zoning designations. The property owner would like to petition a rezoning for neighborhood business C-1. They would like to put a fitness-type facility on this property and the current Residence Two-B District does not allow that particular type of use. And this property is approximately 1.62 acres.
Is there anyone here to speak regarding the Research Station zoning? Yes, sir. Would you come to the microphone, give us your name and address?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Sean Bragg. I live at 308 Research Station Boulevard. My property actually lines up to the northeast corner of the lot that's going to be rezoned. I know she mentioned that it was going to be rezoned for a possible fitness center. I'm assuming that's some type of gym. No, I have a concern, just really wanted to try to get some more information to see if there was somebody maybe I could talk to to get further information if they're allowed to give that.
Is there anyone here that has any information on that? You can?
I'm the current owner, that is why we have to communicate.
Okay, I can hold the meeting open just briefly if you would go into the foyer and?
Thank you, ma'am.
Or if, I tell you what, why don't you ask your questions? If you don't mind, why don't you ask your questions in here so we can hear what your questions are?
Yes, ma'am. I was just specifically wanting to know what was going to be placed on that property if you're at liberty to state.
Yeah, well, right now it's currently?
Would you give your name and address, sir?
I'm Wes Alfred with Breland Companies and right now it's currently zoned for a hotel or office and, you know, we didn't really think that there was a, we, there's no room for a hotel out there. There's, you know, light industry or warehouse all up and down the road and what we had, we had spoke with a local gym that was looking to do a speed and agility-type training at this location from their current location, which would involve single-story office with a back, what I would call warehouse or open gym. And that's pretty much what we intended they used to be. Right now it's just open field that's, you know, overgrown and needing bush hogged every month. So, we were asking you guys for a rezone and, but that's really, pretty much?
A 24-hour facility?
No, sir. It would be mainly just afternoon training for kids going for specialized speed and agility training. Is what we're intending for. We do not have a contract signed with those folks, but they wanted to get the zoning before we moved forward.
Are you allowed to disclose anything?
Yeah, it's a, I can tell you the name of the guy. I don't know exactly what he calls this business, but he has a fitness training that he subs out through the powerhouse facility now on University and they were opening more one-on-one speed and agility at this particular facility. Kind of be a similar building to the play ball sports on the corner.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you say that's a single-story building?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Please keep in mind that if it's rezoned, anything that's allowed in that zone could actually go on that property. So, while I think the intention is good that, you know, this gentleman will development, if it's rezoned, anything that's allowed in that zone could be put in there.
Now or later?
That's correct.
Right. If the gym moved or went out of business, then it could?
Or if the gym didn't materialize, anything that would be allowed in that zone could be built there.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further discussion, any further comments on this facility? We will have further discussion among the Planning Commission later in the meeting agenda, but if there's any further comment from people, from anybody in attendance at the public hearing, now's the time that we would hear that. Hearing no further comment, the public hearing is closed on Research Station rezoning. Our next item, item D, is the Thames zoning. Ashley.
This is newly annexed property. It's located on the north side of Capshaw Road and on the east side of Autumn Branch Drive. This property is approximately .42 acres. It is a part of the existing Autumn Branch subdivision. The first few homes of this property was developed in the county and not in the city limits of Huntsville. The remaining phase was developed in the City of Huntsville, so this particular homeowner petitioned to annex and we would like to zone the property Residence Two District, which is consistent with the remaining subdivision that is in the city limits of Huntsville.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to comment on the Thames zoning? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is zoning ordinance amendment, C-1A deletion. Ashley.
This zoning ordinance amendment is to delete Article 21, which references our neighborhood business C-1A District. Once the C-1A is eliminated on Green Mountain, there will be no neighborhood business C-1 districts in the City of Huntsville, so there will be no need to retain this particular zoning designation. So, planning staff would like to move to delete this article in its entirety.
And that would be dependent on item A?
Yes.
Being resigned, okay.
Yes.
Is there anyone here to speak regarding item E, the zoning ordinance amendment, C-1A deletion? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. And I left Summer Point, public hearing on Summer Point, open and I see Mrs. Knutson is back in. Okay, you, okay, okay. For the record, I see thumbs up back there, so there are no more questions, right? Okay, great. Is there any further comment from anyone on Summer Point subdivision? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Thanks. Madam Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I think that we skipped Hampton Ridge Phase Six, as that was not listed at the top of the public hearings, but it is on the agenda.
Oh, okay. It's final approval.
Yes.
So, it's not required for public hearing. It's gone through the phases.
Just making sure, thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for that. I would have panicked when I got there. Our next section is subdivisions, Hampton Ridge Phase Six. And Gary, can you give us the, Gary Whitley, can you give us the subdivision committee report?
Yes, ma'am. The subdivision committee met on July 15th and they submit the following report for today. Hampton Ridge Phase Six is presented for final approval on 36 lots.
Is it an order for final approval, Michelle?
Sorry. Yes, it's in order with improvements to be installed by July 28th, 2016, and sidewalks to be installed by July 28th, 2017.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item?
Do you have a motion?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Move to approve Hampton Ridge Phase Six.
Second.
All kinds of things we're skipping on Hampton Ridge. Okay, we have a motion and a second now. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we will vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries this time.
Item number two, Harrisburg Estates, Phase Two, a re-subdivision of Track One of Harrisburg Estates. The committee recommends relayout and re-preliminary layout on 22 lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot line between lots 14 and 15, non-radio lot lines between lots 10 and 11, 22 and 23, and double-fronted lot 15.
Now, I'm waiting for a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, Iredale Subdivision Phase Two, a re-subdivision of Track One of Iredale Subdivision Phase One, presented for final approval on 35 lots.
Is it an order for final approval, Michelle?
Yes, it is. In order with sidewalks and improvements to be installed by July 14th, 2016.
Is there any discuss? Oh, we have a motion, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? I just have one thing. What year did you say?
2016.
16, okay. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, Little Mountain Subdivision Phase One, a re-subdivision of lots 20, 21, 22, 33, 58. The committee recommends layout and preliminary approval on five lots with a waiver on the non-radio lot line between lots 58 and 58A.
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
This item is also presented for final approval on five lots.
Is it an order for final approval?
Yes, it's in order.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item five, Meadows at Hampton Cove, Phase Two. The committee recommends relayout and approval on 524 lots and preliminary layout approval on 79 lots with the following modification. Cul-de-sac length to 1,197.55 along cul-de-sac C and the following waivers, non-radio and non- perpendicular lot lines between lots 8, 9, 10, and 11, 36 and 37, 40 through 42, 45 and 46, 56 through 57, 68 and 69, 71 through 76, and the angle of the side lot line between lots 3 and 4, 3, 4, 72, 73, 73, 74, and 75, 76.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six, Oak Grove at Farley Farm, Phase Three. The committee recommends relayout and preliminary layout approval on 32 lots with a waiver on the non-radio lot lines between lots 3 and 4, 22, 23, 27, 28, and the angle of the side lot line between lots 7 and 8.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven, Southgate Subdivision Phase Three, presented for final approval on 21 lots.
Move to approve.
Is it?
Is it an order for final?
Yes, it's in order with sidewalks and improvements to be installed by July 14th, 2016.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Well, I forgot discussion. I don't know why these final approvals are throwing us off so tonight, but is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eight, Summer Point, forwarded without recommendation pending signature approval from the Harvest Monrovia Water Department.
Do we have that?
Yes, signature approval has been received and it's in order for layout and preliminary approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Did we include the non-radio lot lines in that? Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Would you?
Waiver.
Was the layout, item eight should include the layout, the preliminary layout, and the waiver on non-radio lot line between lots 3, 4, and the common area, B Lot 6 and 6, 7.
Okay, so that's included in the motion. Okay, our next item is?
Location, character, and extent. Item one, Providence School Bus Loop Modifications, number 839. Public hearing was held.
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item, petition to revise the final plat note, revise the final plat floodplain notes for Sotheby, Phase Two, at Mullen Cove. The committee recommends approval of said petition. Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, that completes the report of the subdivision committee.
Thank you very much. Les, would you do the zoning committee report?
The zoning committee met on July the 8th, 2015, and the following are the zoning committee recommendations. Item one, Green Mountain Two rezoning. The public hearing was held this evening.
Is there any discussion?
I do have a question on this.
Ms. Robinson.
We're rezoning this entire section here to R-2A. We've had this conversation before, but I just wanted to get it on the record. R-2A is multifamily. Between the septic system issues because there is no sewer up there, as well as concerns with other, regard to other dense subdivisions up there, I have concerns about this. Do we have an assurance from the property owner that that's not anywhere in their plans? I'm just wondering why they're asking for R-2A rather than just doing R-1A.
Well, their property, the property that's, you see here, that's still in the green, that's currently R-2A, this property belongs to that same property owner. So, the two parcels with the single-family detached homes as well as the area north here that's just currently agricultural land are, all belong to the same gentleman, Mr. Henderson. At this time, he does not have any specific plans to develop it in the future, but he is well aware that there is, there are no plans to extend sewer to Green Mountain at this time and it really wouldn't be cost efficient, I guess, to do multifamily.
I've asked this question every time. I ask it of him, but again, I want to publicly ask it. Why R-2 instead of R-1? Has he ever said, I mean, he knows that we, you can't do multifamily there, I'm just wondering what the thought process is.
Right. Well, he, when he purchased the property in the late 90s, it was zoned R-2A and he would like for his property to remain in the present zoning state, which was what he purchased it in. So, that's why he was removed from the initial rezoning request. Initially, it did include all of the properties here that were not C-1 or Residence One District. So, it was just a property owner's choice to be removed.
And what about the property where your?
Cursor.
Pointer is right there. What is that?
This property here, this is zoned Residence One. This property was previously a part of the Shawty rezoning that we had last fall and this property was previously Residence Two-A as well as neighborhood business C-1. Since that rezoning became effective, the C-1 shifted south and this property became Residence One, which is consistent with the majority of the single-family detached dwellings that are here, but currently there is nothing located at this corner.
And the, and the C-1 is where?
The C-1 is the green area that's south here and this is the site of a future public park area.
Okay. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion on this? Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item two is the Magna Carter rezoning. The public hearing was held this evening.
Move to approve.
Any discussion?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item three is Research Station rezoning. The public hearing was held this evening.
Move to approve.
You're here second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I have a question. The majority of this area is R-2B, is that correct?
Yes.
And we're taking a pocket out of the middle of it to make C-1?
That was what was requested by the petitioner.
Okay. Is there, what's adjacent to this? Is there any other commercial space?
No, the nearest commercial space would be the area south here, which is Highway Business C-4. This is the John Deere complex. Also, there is a gymnasium located south of here. Other than that, this entire cluster is some type of single-family, multifamily mix. You do have some C-1 that's located at the intersection of Plummer and Research Park Boulevard, but other than that, all of this area, in the blue, is all zone Residence Two-B. but other than that, all of this area, in, in the blue, is all zone Residence Two-B, which is, uh, multifamily. You can also have some single-family. Also, offices, hotels, and motel uses are permitted there as well.
Next to John Deere, though, is that just grass in between that and the backside?
There is a church that's located here. Um, it's also zoned Residence Two-B. Most of this portion is wooded. There's a good, uh, portion of this area that's in the floodway, so it can't be used, um, which kind of runs against the south boundary here of this property. Um, and then directly behind the proposed rezoning portion is actually a retention pond for the research station subdivision.
And, and that we can barely see trees or houses back behind it? Is that
Um, no.
Like three streets that, that turn into one going, going back behind it? Is that what I'm seeing there?
Um, most of this is wooded, the only entrance.
No, I mean behind.
In front of you.
Oh, in front of here. Yes.
Yeah, so that's the main entrance.
This is the research, uh,
Station.
Research Station Boulevard. This is one of the main entrances to the research station neighborhood. The other entrance is on, uh, Plummer Road. Those are the only two entrances and exits for this neighborhood.
That, that's off of a frontage road?
Yes.
Frontage road there?
Yes. Now turn off the zoning, that may help.
Okay, good.
There we go. So, here's our proposed rezoning area here, um, outlined in the red. I'm trying to zoom into the retention pond, which is more of a, a ditched area, and then you see the wooded area, um, on the south.
What are the landscape requirements for this particular, um, area if it is allowed to be rezoned?
I think it's fifteen feet. Is that correct, Jim?
Yeah, board members, it's a fifteen-foot buffer of screen planting required along residential district.
So the neighbors would have some privacy from the business?
They would.
Yeah. But i- am I understanding that the ditch is already separating the rear of the lots and the proposed rezoning?
Not all of them.
It stops.
It's like the first six houses.
So the ditch stopped. Okay, it doesn't go, it doesn't run straight through?
No.
Okay.
What is that, what is that major street that is, is that, that's research?
This is Research Park.
And board members, just for information, the property to the north of this subdivision, recently went before the Board of Adjustment, received a use variance for a auto repair business, which is partly in the city, partly in the county, and above that, north of that, is a self-storage facility under construction, which is in the county as well. So zoning does not apply on those two pieces of property. City zoning.
It appears that this, uh, s- strip along Research Park is tending to go commercial, and that's, that's not necessarily a bad thing, but the thing that is a little bit of a concern to me is that this whole area is, is zoned residential, and we're taking a piece out of it just to make commercial. But it is on that strip of, of, uh, fronting Research Park.
Les, I, I, I agree with you, but I think the outline, so if John, next to door to John Deere's is church, and because churches can go anywhere, that probably would have been Highway C-four, going straight up Research Park, 'cause it's already, see how it crosses the highway?
All of this property was rezoned together.
Yeah.
Um, so the zoning is pretty consistent for the strips, and the shorter, um, C-one, uh, designations are because of the depth clause that was created after two thousand and two. Um, so that's why they're as short as they are, which in some areas, it makes the property, um, you can't use it because it's just not enough depth to put any particular use.
And this would make the depth requirement for C-one?
Yes.
Depth restriction. And the property where the church is, is there, is, is that all owned by the church? All that forested area, can you tell? Do you know?
Um, I don't have the parcels here, um, but there is a good bit of that that is owned by the church. Um, but again, it's in the floodway, so it can't be developed.
But this is not in the floodway?
Um, no, the hatched portion is not. I think there's a small portion that may be in the fringe, and if they wanted to build in that area, they'd have to build it up, but the majority of the property is not in the flood, fringe.
Is there a requirement for the type of foliage that would have to go into that, uh, fifteen-foot barrier?
Yes, sir. There's a tree and shrub count based on the linear distance, and it also, uh, outlines the type of tree and shrubs, uh, required.
Thank you.
Would there, would there be a possibility of doing plat restrictions on this that would limit it to one story?
Um, if the applic- if the, uh, item is sent back to zoning committee, the property owner could apply plat restrictions if that is their wish. They could, uh, restrict density controls as well as uses if, if that is their choice. Or they could present the item again as it is.
C-one allows three stories. Is that right?
Yes.
That's correct. Max height and three stories.
Okay. Any other questions? Um, okay, um,
The, the landscaping requirements increase with the story, is right?
There's just a general fifteen-foot buffer along the budding, uh, residential district from commercial.
Whether it's one story or two?
The, the story height, uh, is required based on the distance from the property line to the structure. As the structure gets taller, it has to be further away from the property line.
So, um,
If it's a two-story, it wouldn't be approved. It wouldn't be approved as a two-story, 'cause it would be too close.
Do, do we know the size of the property, dimensions, front to back, side to side?
Um, I do not have those. I don't
I just know the acreage size. I don't know the depth in the frontage.
An acreage?
Acreage, one point six.
One point six?
Yes, sir.
I guess my, my main concern with this is the fact that a three-story building can be placed on this property, and people look out their backyard and have to look into a, um, a tall structure, you know, looking out of their backyards. That's, that's one of my main concerns. That's why I keep asking about the, the barriers and the type of foliage that, that will be built, uh, and put into that, that, uh, buffer zone.
Just remember, too, that hotels are permitted in this district currently, so they would have the ability to, you know, have a height similar to what C-one is.
What, what would that height be?
I, I don't have the number on the top of my head. I'd have to look.
Well, I, you know, I, I think, you know, in looking at it, I don't think it's really suitable. One point six-two acres is not enough to build, uh, uh, houses, um, and market them right there on, um, uh, and I don't know, you know, how you, you come into it. I, I don't really have a problem with the one-story gym and, and the location and, and what's already there, but I'd really like to see some plat restrictions to, to keep that height to one story. Um.
Do we already have a motion on the floor?
We do, but it can be modified, I think. Could it?
If there's a motion to return it to committee, it would be, it would take precedent?
Precedent.
If you just simply make that motion, it's second, we can vote, and it would go back without having to go back to the main.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we send this particular issue back to committee for, um, to see if we can get plat restrictions placed on the property for the height of the building.
Second.
Okay. Um, any discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Okay, now if I understand it right, we, we vote on just this one motion. Okay. Okay. Okay, we have a, a motion and a second to send it back to, um, committee, um, and, uh, request of the, um, developer that we put a single-story height, um, restriction on the plat. Um, uh, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Uh, aye. All opposed? Motion carries. It will be sent back to committee. Um,
Item, item four is Thames rezoning. The public hearing was held this evening.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item five is zoning ordinance amendment, C-1A deletion. This deletes zoning ordinance Article Twenty-One, Neighborhood Business C-1A District Regulations. The public hearing was held this evening.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is the C-1A, uh, deletion resulting from the Green Co- Green Mountain cleanup, right?
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item six is zoning ordinance amendment, Village C-six District. This adds new Article Twenty-seven Village C-six District Regulations and amends Article Seventy-five, Alcoholic Beverage Control Regulations to add regulations for Article Twenty-seven. The committee recommends that a public hearing be set for August the twenty-fifth.
Move to set a public hearing?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, thank you, Les. Our next item is invocation and extension of bonds. Uh, Michelle, would you do that for us?
Yes, Madam Chair. Um, staff recommends the invocation of items one through six.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, if there's no further business, then we are adjourned.